Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the August regular meeting of the Prior Lake Savage Board of Education. I'll now call the meeting to order. Please stand as you are able and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have one member, remember Johnson will be joining us remote around 6:30, he thought, and Director Mason is missing tonight, and I believe that Director France is on her way. So, we will start out tonight with Laker Pride, Dr. Thomas.
Thank you so much. Chair White, Board of Directors, I am excited tonight to learn a little bit about some of our students who had probably a trip of a lifetime to go to Germany, June 8th through the 20th, and Mary Dooley and Lisa Becker were the ones who put this experience together for our students, and we're excited to learn a little bit about what you've learned about, and also see some pictures and things of that nature. So, with no further ado, Mary and Lisa, if you want to come forward and then introduce the students and talk a little bit about your presentation, we're excited.
The kids are going to do most of the talking when the pictures come up, but we have Ben Mallett, we have Marshall Hillis, Ava Schlegel, and Finny Butler. For our students tonight, I'm supposed to hit escape, escape, oh, this is messy, like escape, escape. Click on here to get our presentation up. Basically, I hope you can see between the two screens, so it just says that there were 34 students and then four Prior Lake staff members, so Lisa Becker, high school German teacher, John Engelsby, who was a former German teacher, now teaches at Jeffers Pond, Sarah Dirk was our administrator chaperone, and then myself. So, we did spend 12 days in these countries. As each, as each city comes up, then I'm going to have the kids start talking more than me, but that kind of shows the route that we took. So, landed in Frankfurt and did Austria, Switzerland, even an afternoon in France, and then back up into Germany. So, basically highlights, you'll get to hear a few things from the students about these highlights of the trips, whether it's castles or hiking and waterfalls and cathedrals. So, our first town, and I want, like I said, the students to kind of look at the pictures, kind of relive that first day in Germany, and any and all of you can make comments from where you are, or what do you remember about day one?
We were really tired.
They were quite tired from the flight, that is true.
Wasn't there like a festival going on too?
There was.
And they shot like cannons to commemorate.
It was giving like a brand fair vibe.
It was very much like the Renaissance Festival because it was celebrated the Renaissance from the 1400s, exactly.
Yes, and a lot of like people, a lot of like shops and.
Medieval cities, so those are some photos from that first town. We'll keep it brief. The next city we headed to was Ulm, Germany, we've all heard of New Ulm, Minnesota, which is a sister city. What do you guys remember, or what are highlights from that second day on our trip?
This one was a workout for Sharon.
Yeah, the church was hard in German, walk those steps.
Do you remember how many steps we climbed up?
I think it was like 500-ish?
650. So, we went 600, that's the tallest church tower in the world.
And very, very narrow staircase, too.
Yeah. We were there for like 15 minutes, 20 minutes.
It was so tiny, it was just spiral, you couldn't see the top.
Up and up and up and up and up.
Are we there yet?
It was really cool once you got to the top because there was like a thing.
You could see like almost the entirety of the city that it was closing, so.
The walk-up, and who's the little character in the middle there?
Einstein.
We didn't do a ton, but that was his birthplace. So, that was Ulm, the second day. The third day, we headed to Dachau. We'll start with that city, that town, what did we do in Dachau?
We went to see the old concentration.
First concentration camp built, 1933. So, we did get to have a tour, and we looked at the museum, there was a movie, and then on to Munich, the third largest city. What do you guys know or remember about the two days in Munich?
The Olympic Park is pretty cool. I don't think anybody did the trampoline though, did they?
No, they had to be. It was actually, you had to be 80.
You were like, you were like jumping for like 10 minutes.
Yeah, you had to be 80 kilograms or lighter, so a lot of kids weighed more than that, but what were the things?
They had like the pool, so it was a lot of like bonding time.
Oh, I remember that surfboard, that, no, the diving board, diving board.
Diving board, and how high was the platform, for the highest one, do you guys remember?
Like 30 feet?
It was 33 feet, so 10 meters. So, that's where the Olympics were in 1972, so they have the platforms for 3 meters, 5, 7 and 1/2, and 10, and many of the students were jumping off the 10 meters, so 33 feet, into the water, and what kind of cars are made in Munich? You guys see the picture?
BMW.
I liked that museum.
They had cars built there.
Cars, you got to sit in the cars, the motorcycles, and then also palaces and castles there as well. All right, we saw some really special castles down in the Alps, who wants to talk about those?
I really liked the Neuschwanstein Castle. I thought it was really cool, and I really liked just hearing the story about the like the old king that used to live there, and like how he made all of the.
Right, he had three castles.
That bridge was a little freaky though.
It was. And you could see two of the students on the bridge overlooking the castle for Neuschwanstein.
I really liked Linderhof Castle.
A Linderhof.
It was very like grandeur.
It was a beautiful palace.
There was like a lot of like gold and things, it was like white. Very neat.
Wasn't that like the only finished one though?
That's his only one, yeah, that he, Harry Keene said he'd just stop it. But they are beautiful castles. Real gold, yes, real gold. Then we were off to Reutel, which is a city in Austria. Look at the pictures and tell me what you, what we did there.
Big old bridge, and it was really great.
So, it's called the Highlight 179, so it's 403 meters, like four football fields long, and it hangs 140 feet in the air, and we crossed. So, these are actual photos of our kids on the bridge and looking at the castle ruins. So, that was kind of an exciting thing, we did that early in the mornings, crossed the big bridge, then we headed to Oberstorf in the mountains, tell me about that day.
It was steep for Sharon.
Steep to get, yes, a big hike.
It was really beautiful though.
It was pretty. And the glacier length there, we had a lot of fun at the lake there.
Just imagine like Superior, but a little colder.
A little colder. So, we took the gondola up, we hiked down for two and a half hours to get to this lake in the mountains, and then it was another hour and 15 minutes, and that was when we had what?
The rain.
The rain, walking down the rest of the mountain.
Inhale, don't forget the hail.
Little bit of hail too, but again, these are all photos of our students doing all these things. And then we headed to Switzerland. Chocolate Factory. At this point, I want Ben to pass us some more Swiss chocolate to the four members. So, we'll start with the chocolate factory.
Well, one for each.
Would you like to say it, the Swiss Chocolate Factory?
They're good luck in Germany.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Like you can see their hand has three buckets. He got three for 30 euros.
Those were the defects you could buy for children?
Yeah, it was just like packaging defects.
How did we miss that?
I didn't see that, I mean, yes, you're right, the ones with chocolate.
Yeah, the chocolate, there was like a wrong with the actual chocolate, it was just.
Okay, well, next time.
So, the free samples for the chocolate tour, and then how about the cheese factory, went to a Swiss cheese factory.
It was good. They gave us little samples of the cheese, all the ages and.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Nine months.
Again, movies, so they make it a big tour of the facility, and then lastly, the largest waterfall in Europe, we got to see it, we got to be in it.
There was a little trail, you could go all the way down, you could, you could touch the waterfall, you could touch it.
Touch the Rhine.
You could touch the water at the bottom here.
Yeah, but that sounds cool.
And you get a little splash from the Rhine, but that is the largest waterfall in Switzerland, or in Europe, right, in Switzerland. Then we headed up through, back into Germany, through the Black Forest, tell me a couple of things we did in the Black Forest.
Oh, we saw Germany's Toss Waterfall, right?
Exactly, in Treburg, that's the middle picture.
Yeah, we went, yeah, we hiked up a thing, we also saw the, yeah, the clock.
Largest clock in the world.
We watched a guy actually make a clock, so that was fun.
So, demonstration at the woodcarver shop, he sat and he'd demonstrate how they put the clocks together, that's, the older gentleman's a five-generation woodcarver, and then his son is six, so that's his grandson, who's a seventh-generation woodcarver, and sits and just carves wood. And then lastly, the two other pictures on the side, what else did we do there?
The Alpine slides.
They each got four rides down the mountain, they had so much fun. So, that's in the Black Forest. The next day, we headed a little bit farther north, we went to Europa Park, do you want to explain what that is?
It's like Germany's Disneyland, right?
Yeah.
They even got Eiffel Tower.
They have like different like sections of the park based on different like countries in Europe.
Yeah, so it was all like very themed, it was all very.
Yeah. The Ireland sign there.
Yep, it says Ireland for Ireland, but yeah, you walk through 14 different countries, you get to have food from Russia, or from Austria, or Liechtenstein, like you get the culture, and they have movies and performances as well, but lots of rides. And then we spent about five hours, I would say, in Strasbourg, France, because it's right on the border there, tell me what you liked about Strasbourg?
Notre Dame school, we had to go.
Very, I can see very detailed.
And what's that other thing?
Carousel.
We all took a carousel ride, and there it was kind of neat because the kids then appreciated knowing German and how different it was. So, French was difficult for us for those couple hours. And they wouldn't speak German really to us, although they probably knew some German. And our last and final day was in Heidelberg, Germany, tell me a little bit about that afternoon because we kind of rushed.
Have we, we went up like the sideways tram thing up to like, to see a castle and like see the view of the city?
Yeah.
I thought it was a friend of mine.
The largest one. That's right, so Finny had an, well, you can tell about your exchange student.
Yeah, so a while ago, I had my family hosted an exchange meeting from Germany, and she lived a bit farther from Heidelberg, but we were able to meet up on the last day in Heidelberg and spent a few hours together. I hadn't seen her in six years up to that point, so that was very fun.
Glad you were able to do that.
We saw that monkey statue.
Yeah, there's, oh, yes, statue in front of the famous Heidelberg Bridge, and if you touch it, it's supposed to bring you, was it wealth or happiness, a legend, but, and finally down at the bottom, we had our award ceremony, where each student was given a little prize, and then, you know, if they spoke a lot of German, or most improved, or best traveler awards, so those types of things. Another fun thing, we'll let Ava talk about this one, because she's in the talent show.
It was just like a little talent show that we had in one of the, one of the data where people like played piano, there was some like.
That's right, Finny was also in the talent show, Taekwondo.
Just a little show of things, there's some serious piano players and that, not so much me, but.
No, you all did great. So, we had a little entertainment and for prizes, and then just a couple of random pictures from different lakes, and just how the kids played soccer and volleyball in the evenings, or played giant chess, which is pretty common there. And I think the best part really was like the friendships that they made, and they all got along so well, so you can just see them together at all the meals, and it just, the whole experience. So, we do want to thank the school board members, of course, for allowing the kids to do this, because I think it was very educational, being surrounded with the German language, they had to order their meals for lunch, they had to shop on their own, and I think, I think they learned a lot, and use the language very well. And Lisa, any comments about just overall?
I agree. As you said, it's a trip of a lifetime, and hopefully that that'll inspire some of them to continue German, but also to maybe travel back on their own someday.
Oh, yeah, you would have been very proud, we got lots of compliments, even at restaurants, I didn't hear that one, but you said a German teacher.
Yes, a teacher from Germany came up when the entire group was having lunch, and just commended them on their exemplary behavior, they were just, they were overwhelmed with the group of us coming in unannounced, and they were polite, they appreciated that, and so for a German teacher to say, wow, your kids are so well behaved, as if better than German students, I guess, or students in Germany.
And our bus driver too said their kids were awesome, they were so respectful, they didn't, you know, they were just good. Once or twice we were late, supposed to meet them at the bus, but, but no, just very respectful and.
That's the hazard of traveling with 30 some odd people.
So, I'm supposed to do something at the end, I think escape at the end, but that is our presentation, so again, do you have any questions for the kids? But it was a great experience every day, and I was very, very, very proud of them, so.
Absolutely.
Final questions, are we good?
That's awesome.
I just, I just think that last slide sums it all up, I love hearing, I love obviously seeing all the things that you were able to do, but I think it, it says a lot that the compliments that you received, so thank you for behaving so well and representing Prior Lake so well abroad.
Exactly, I felt the same way, so, yeah, they were great travelers, so thank you.
And students, if you want to come forward, thank, first of all, thank you both for your leadership, and the students, and if the students that are here, and the two of you come forward for a picture.
Oh, my goodness.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thanks for sharing.
All right, thanks again, guys, that was awesome. Next up is the superintendent report, Dr. Thomas.
Thank you. Just a couple of quick things to recap and to announce some others. Just last week, several of us did our annual Night to Unite, we also partner with the city of Prior Lake, first responders, police, fire, and everything, so we meet up and do a big group photo every year as well, but just wanted to say thank you to all those who participated, and just a thank you to our community, it's a great opportunity for us to come out and meet new neighbors and build new relationships and friendships with folks throughout our community, so that was a real fun opportunity to connect. We also, many of us were down at Prior Lake Days on Saturday, through rain, sleet, or snow, as they say. We definitely had some booms, and we definitely had some rain on Saturday, but believe it or not, people were packed in there, under umbrellas and really enjoying themselves, so thank you to all the staff, and again, just an opportunity for us to connect with our community. In that same spirit of celebration, we are doing our second annual back-to-school celebration, August 18th, from 5 to 7, invitation to all of Prior Lake Savage, Credit River, Spring Lake Township, and others, to come on out to the high school at the lower lot. It's a community-wide event, we'll have plenty of food trucks, family-friendly activities, we'll probably have our own in-house DJ again, and we also have something new this year, and that's the Stuff the Bus School Supply Drive, so a great opportunity, and I think it's going to be Stuff the Bus Trailer, technically, just so that kids can get onto the bus and tour the bus, and turn on the lights and open doors and all that, so we'll have a trailer to pack everything. But again, last year was our inaugural event of that, and it was packed, and we want to make sure that our community comes out for that, we're really looking forward to a nice way to kick off the spirit of a new school year. And then lastly, just as we all are anxious to bring our kids back, we also, as the adults get anxious of bringing the adults back, and so we are bringing our staff back on August 28th, or August 26th, sorry, I almost gave you two more days of summer vacation. August 26th at 7:30 in the morning, that's again, at the high school, so always looking forward to a great, all-staff-welcome, introducing the board, new staff members, and just the new theme of the year as well, so looking forward to a lot of great events coming up. And that's all I have, Chair.
All right, thank you. We have no proclamations this evening, so this brings us to the open forum, this is a 15-minute period of time set aside for the board to receive citizen input. Please respect the three-minute time limit that each speaker has, we have three speakers tonight. First up is Becca Moser.
Good evening. I am here tonight to ask the board members to stop using language that hurts our students and families. When I watched Director Atkinson's language and behavior at the July board meeting, I was appalled. So, when Director Atkinson recently celebrated its media coverage in a public Facebook post, and asked a community member, quote, "Can you please help me understand how I promoted anti-trans talking points in my post?", I appealed to her directly, and I said, "Using language like, quote, biological male, and quote, biological female, is hurtful to many trans and gender non-conforming students. Stop it." I was met with mockery and accused of harassment, so I am here now to ask the board for support. I will tell you what I told her before I left the online discourse. I'm not here to harass, I am here as a human, asking you to stop hurting people. I spoke with my child about this interaction with the board director, and their response was, quote, "Ew, gross." No, that's not okay. I asked to make sure I wasn't speaking incorrectly on how using anti-trans language like biological whatever, instead of how their friends identify is hurtful, and they say it is. I believe them. I'm a parent in the district and have been a Savage resident for 21 years. I know many LGBTQ plus members of our community and kids within the district. I spent a day at Pride with some of them. I'm not asking for a list of politically correct terms for you to use. I am pleading for board members to stop knowingly hurting people. I'm here tonight telling you that students say it's hurtful, and that should be enough for all of you to take seriously. So, by whatever means you have, can you please commit to decency on this matter and the larger issue of supporting our LGBTQ plus students? We would not tolerate this behavior from our students. My kid is right, what's happening now is gross. Thank you.
Thank you, Becca. Next on the DACA is Mary Ann Vandevosse, I hope I got that right.
Good evening. My name is Mary Ann Vandevosse, I lived in, I've lived in Savage for, since 2009, and I'm the proud grandparent of a trans grandchild and a gay grandchild, neither of whom who have ever been to a Prior Lake Savage school, because they don't live here, and besides, they're all older than that right now. But I have come to you tonight because I did send to Chairman White a piece of research by Their World, which is spelled T-H-I-E-R-W-O-R-L-D, and that is an organization, a charitable organization, and they did research which shows that there's alarming new data that US LBGTQ plus students are twice as likely to drop out of high school, and it costs our economy when that happens. And so, I bring that to the board's attention today, because I'm not sure if Chairman White passed that on to you or not, so I want you to be cognizant of this kind of research, and what it might mean to students in Prior Lake. It shows that, suggests that more than one in every 10 LBGTQ plus students in the US does not complete high school, compared to, and that's 11.6%, and that compares to 5.7% across the country's education system. And it also, projections show that a dropout rate of between 8.3% and 14% for LBGTQ plus high school students in the US has a midpoint of 11.6%. The national figure is higher than the nation's most comparable neighbor, Canada, which has a projected dropout rate of 9.9%. The projections suggest that more than 650,000 LBGTQ plus students currently aged 12 to 17 in the US are at risk of not completing high school. Research predict long-term economic consequences running into the billions, projecting each graduating class of LBGTQ plus students who leave school early cost the US economy up to 706 million. Over a working lifetime, this equates to more than 30 billion for each cohort of students not graduating from high school. And a quote from the researcher who did the study says, "When we fail to nurture all young people, we face not only a moral dilemma, but a serio, but serious economic consequences." So, I bring that to your attention as you consider the role of policy as school board members. Thank you.
Thank you. And our last speaker is Jason Anderson.
Good evening, board. I come saddened to read the news of a situation within our beloved Prior Lake and Savage community. I would like to give a PSA to the knowledge of an open investigation by the Prior Lake Police Department and Minnesota Attorney's General's Office to a sexual assault incident to a minor, by a minor occurring Tuesday, August 5th, at Thomas Ryan Memorial Field. This was conducted by the Prior Lake Athletics for Youth Organization, which operates many of its functions and activities on Prior Lake area school fields and gyms. I urge all parents to talk to their kids about what to do if verbal or physical assault or harassment happens to them or someone else. I know that Prior Lake Area School has a strict anti-bully policy, which I would urge the school board and members, the school board members and the community members, all of us, to expect all organizations to enforce a similar policy on Prior Lake Area School or Savage and Prior Lake public property involving students and children. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up is the approval of the agenda.
Can you make sure that Charles can hear?
Yeah, are you, can you hear Charles?
Yep, I can hear everybody, thank you.
The approval of the agenda, I'll entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda as presented by Director Atkinson, second.
Second.
By Director Bullion, in discussion. Hearing none, we will be taking roll call votes all night due to Charles' remote attendance, so we'll start it with Jess.
Aye.
And Lisa.
Aye.
Amy.
Aye.
Mary.
Aye.
And Charles?
Aye.
And aye, that motion carries 6-0. Next up is the consent agenda, these are items that are considered routine in nature and will be enacted with, with one motion. Is there anything that anyone would like pulled off the consent agenda for separate discussion? All right, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to accept, or to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Sound made.
By Mary, second.
Second.
By Jess, any discussion? Hearing none, we'll start with Jess at the end.
Aye.
And Lisa.
Aye.
Amy.
Aye.
Mary.
Aye.
And Charles?
Aye.
All aye, that carries 6-0. Next, we're moving down to personnel items. We have a new PLSAS administrator, Director Knudsen.
Sorry, pinch it here. Thank you, Chair White, I just want to introduce Mr. Robert Coltherne, who will be joining the PLSAS family as our new Executive Director of Administrative Services. Robert comes to us from Rochester Public Schools, and he's here tonight, if he wants to come forward and just to say a quick hello, thank you for making that trek up here. And we're thrilled to have him join the team, his background. His background and experience is in a very large system, very complicated system, but more so just knowing all the technical aspects of what's moving forward with contracts, et cetera, in the K-12 industry. He possesses a wealth of knowledge in that, and so just truly grateful for you to join the team and turn it to you if you want to say a few words about yourself.
Well, thank you very much. Yes, like Superintendent Thomas said, I come from Rochester Public Schools. I've been there the last 14 years. My wife Elise is here in the audience as well. She drove up with me to see this, and we're super excited to be part of this family. Since I've made it official down in Rochester, I can't tell you how many people have come to me and said they started their career here, or they worked at Prior Lake at some time, or they lived in this community, and just told me how awesome everything is about it. So I'm extremely excited, extremely blessed to be here, and can't wait to be a Laker. Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Welcome.
Okay, then I will entertain a motion to accept Robert Cothorn as our next Executive Director of Administrative Services.
So made.
by Amy, second.
Second.
by Jess, any discussion? Hearing none. Jess, we'll start with you again.
Welcome. Aye.
Lisa.
Aye.
Amy.
Aye.
Mary.
Aye.
And Charles.
Aye.
And aye. That motion carries 6-0. Next is the extension of the term of the interim Executive Director of Administrative Services, Dr. Thomas.
Thank you, Chair White, Board of Directors. Before you, you have an extension of the interim appointment that Michael Knutson has so graciously accepted in this time of transition. And so we needed to, it was through the month of July, but because of negotiating times and everything like that, he'll be doing this through the 15th. And so just wanted to extend that extra time for him in that interim capacity through August 15th. And that's what we are seeking your action for.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to accept the extension of interim Director Knutson's time.
So made.
by Mary, second.
Second.
by Amy, any discussion? And Jess.
Thank you. Aye.
Lisa.
Aye.
Amy.
Thank you for your flexibility. Aye.
Mary. Charles.
Aye.
And aye. That motion carries 6-0. All right, we have no unfinished business. We'll move down to new business. Budget update. Enrollment Report, Director Ryder.
Good evening and thank you. So in tonight's report, we have the enrollment history that you've seen in the past with a slight change to it that I'd like to talk to you about, and the kindergarten enrollment. As we look at the enrollment history, you'll find that the rows are numbered. And as you go down, looking at the school year 2425, which is the past school year, you will see that every month you were given numbers for enrollment. Those numbers for enrollment are of a head count, you might say, or cheeks and seats, butts and seats, right? So that is what those numbers reflect. And throughout the school year, that's what you would expect to see, is the count of how many students there are in each of the different grade levels and what those numbers look like at the end or at the timing of each month's report. Okay? I added row 13. Row 13 now is taking a look back at last year, and now we have reported our numbers through the state edit process. And that's when you're able then to see how the parts of students' enrollments throughout the year have added up, and what is the equivalent average daily membership then for all of the students. You can't do that really throughout the school year because you need to see kind of, okay, of all of the days that they could be here, what days were they with us? What days were they with another school district? And when it passes through the state edit system, that means they're comparing all of the school districts. So if every student has an ID number, a student can't be in two places on the same day. So if there is a problem like that, it's called an error, and they put it back through for the districts to work out. And we have until the end of December to square all those errors away. Okay? So when you hear us talking on a month-to-month basis throughout the school year, those are going to be more headcount. Whereas when we get to this point in time and we're looking back, the numbers are going to look different because they are a different reflection of those numbers. They mean something different. Now it's an average daily membership. And that is what is the basis of the revenue calculations that we have for purposes of audit and for funding. Okay? So it would be my practice then, moving forward, that as we have new runs, we'd be showing that as a comparison so you can see how that might be shifting or not shifting. Okay? We will be using these numbers at this point in time for our audit because those are the latest numbers. We will check them one more time before the audit is issued, just to see the latest then, and make sure there's no need for an adjustment of any kind at that point. So that's the enrollment report I have for you. If we look at the kindergarten enrollment report, now we're switching over to the new year. So you see here now 2526 at the top of the kindergarten enrollments. And you're seeing a comparison to every other school year at this point in time in that year. Okay? And as you make those comparisons, you can see what we're seeing is that it's about 96 to 98% or on average of all the years shown, 97% of the way there. Okay? So the count that we show right now as of August 1st is 515. That 515, if we assume 97% of that number has been calculated, it would mean then that we would anticipate a count of 531 kindergarteners. So this is a report we've just tried to update, and you can see the history all the way back through, when did we start? This February 3rd? Okay? So we'll continue this process until we get to that October 1 piece. And, or I think it's actually when school begins, we'll continue through the month of September so you can see that. And there is always then the shifts that will happen at the start of the school year where you find that there are students who may look as though they're enrolled, but then they go elsewhere possibly, or they're not on our list any longer. They have to be dropped, right? So I do anticipate there will be some shifts to these numbers, but this is kindergarten only in this report. And that's the enrollment.
Any questions for Director Ryder? Okay. Moving down to the budget calendar, which we will need to take action on, Director Ryder.
Thank you. The budget calendar is a timeline for the 2026-2027 budget planning. I take a look at this calendar, and I know that this calendar actually reflects three different school years. Okay? And the reason I say that is because beginning in July is when we start pulling our data together that we have to submit to the state of Minnesota for the process of them providing us what they call levy certification sheets. And in September, you have the opportunity to certify that preliminary levy on a maximum basis with all the formulas having been calculated by the state at that point in time, leaving an opportunity for any November elections, then you then certify final in December. That's the beginning of our cycle for the 2627 school year. Okay, so that's already started now. And so when you see reflections of that levy process, that's for that school year, the 2627 school year. You will also see within this budget planning document indications of the 2526 budget where we're just watching our, we're comparing our enrollment, for example. We're taking a look at the revision to any necessary changes to the current year budget, and we're executing that budget, right? So throughout the school year, we're working off that budget. We're working on making sure it's as accurate as possible. You will also note that on October 13th, what's listed here is a board meeting to review audit presentation. Here's where you're looking back at the previous year. And with that information we get from that audit presentation, we will use that information to consider if that changes or modifies anything about our expectations for the future and how we might want to adjust the current year budget or even future plans. Okay? So this is a timeline for the 2627 budget planning. It's very similar in nature to the previous year's timeline as to the content. Days shifted somewhat. Included in here, you will see that there is indication of finance and operations advisory committee. So we are expanding that and including the operations. We've expanded the opportunity for applications and welcome anyone to please apply. And so that's a part of our process as well for budget development. Questions?
Any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. Thank you. Just one thing regarding the finance and advisory committee meetings. Notice that they shifted to a Wednesday versus they were on a Tuesday. Is that something we could bring to the committee for discussion as far as what works best for everybody's calendar?
Yeah, we've had, there's three different active groups that are now out there again for applications, and there has been some shifting of days from Thursday to Tuesday and then Tuesday to Wednesday. So we can talk that through, see if we can figure that out moving forward.
But even though if we approve this, can that still change? Or do we have to bring it back up for approval?
If I can add to this. So this is draft. This is subject to change. You're approving the general flow of what we have. There will be some ebbs and flows that we need. We're meeting next Monday, I believe, in the afternoon. We're going to talk through a little bit about some of that meeting cadence, you know, due to some of the other committees shifting days and how we try to not be on the same morning because some of us present at both. So we can't split ourselves. So we're going to have to work through some of that. So as long as the board knows, this is probably, you know, 95% set. There's going to be about a 5% wiggle room on some things. A committee might say, you know, we're going to move our date, or, you know, we're not quite ready for the town hall yet because we want to look at these numbers. That might shift a week. So, but you get the general cadences, which you're approving tonight. So.
That's perfect. Thank you for clarifying that.
Any other questions? All right, hearing none. I'll entertain a motion to approve the budget calendar as presented. Mary, second.
Second.
by Lisa, any further discussion? Hearing none. We'll start with Jess on the end.
Aye.
Lisa.
Aye.
Amy.
Aye.
And Mary.
Aye.
Charles.
Aye.
And aye. That motion carries 6-0. All right, setting the levy meeting date, the truth and taxation hearing, Director Ryder.
Every year, there is a truth and taxation hearing required of a school district, and ours is typically set in that meeting in December. And so it is suggested that that meeting date be December 8th, 2025, at the board meeting, at the start of the board meeting.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to set December 8th as the truth and taxation hearing.
So made.
by Lisa, second.
Second.
by Amy. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. We'll start with Jess again.
Aye.
And Lisa.
Aye.
Amy.
Aye.
Mary.
Aye.
And Charles.
Aye.
And aye. That carries 6-0. All right, now we have a resolution calling for a special election to fill a school board vacancy. I'll entertain a motion to accept the resolution as presented.
So made.
by Director Bullion, second.
Second.
by Director Atkinson. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. Start at the end. Jess.
Aye.
Lisa.
Aye.
Amy.
Aye.
Mary.
Aye.
And Charles.
Aye.
And aye. That motion carries 6-0. Next on the agenda is the 2526 Prior Lake Savage Area Schools Policies for Parent-Student Handbooks. Dr. Thomas.
Thank you, Chair White, Board of Directors. What you have in the packet this evening are the electronic hyperlinks to all the policies that are embedded in all school handbooks. As those policies have been revised, they get updated so that parents have the most updated versions of every policy that we expect would be aligning to their student and/or their family. So that's what you're approving tonight, the ones that are in those handbooks every year, that they're updated.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to accept these policies as presented.
So made.
by Jess, second. By Amy. Any other discussion, questions?
I had one thing. Under Title IX, Emily Herman is still listed, so we'll need to get that changed.
Oh, as the contact. Now that we have the.
As the coordinator. Yeah.
With the official hiring, we'll get that changed over now.
Just wanted to make sure it was there.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. We'll start with Jess again.
Aye.
Lisa.
Aye.
Amy.
Aye.
Mary.
Aye.
Charles.
Aye.
And aye. That motion carries 6-0. Moving down to policy, we have a second and final reading of Policy 904. I'll entertain a motion to accept Policy 904 as presented with changes that we agreed to at our last study session.
So made.
by Amy, second. By Lisa. Any discussion? Hearing none. We'll start with Jess on the end.
Aye.
Lisa.
Aye.
Amy.
Aye.
Mary.
Aye.
Charles.
Aye.
And aye. That motion carries 6-0. And the next policies, we have Policy 414, 418, 515, 707, 709, and 802. We are asking for a first and only reading tonight as these changes are just statutory in nature and of the body of the language remains unchanged. It's just updating them to reflect current state law. So I will entertain a motion to accept those policies as presented.
So made.
by Amy, second.
Second.
by Mary. Any questions or discussion?
I just have a question. So will these policies still go through the normal cycle for other review?
Director Atkinson, yes. As the 400s or 700s, et cetera, come through, even though these changes were made based on state statute, would they still be reviewed in that body or that series?
Okay.
And/or sequence, yeah.
Other sequence. Thank you for clarifying that.
I would assume that the, as Director Herman had stated before she left, that maybe there's going to be some changes, so leaving up to the new director to determine the cadence of the policies going through.
It could be block numbers, it could be sequence of similar topics, you know? That's something that I know we've already spoken with our board, current board reps, about, and that definitely would carry forward with Robin team.
Okay. Anything else?
I had a couple of things.
Yes, Jess.
Just quick questions. On 515, Liz's name is there, and I assume that's one of those situations where we have to list a name, correct? I'm just confirming. Okay, great. And then in 709, I'm sorry if I can skip that. Is that okay? Turning my page here. I was just curious why the deadline section was deleted. Is that a statutory thing or?
Which one? Or what section?
Sorry, under C, Section 2 was all deleted. I was just curious as to why.
Yeah, this is just to reflect the current practice of state law. That's the only reason that this was deleted.
But I thought, I thought those deadlines had to be in place, though. Sorry, I don't mean to be dense. I really don't. I thought we had to have deadlines for students to get safety training by a certain point.
We, right now, as the state law says, we have to have them in, you know, every year. But when we do those timings or when we do those trainings is not something that's written into law.
Okay.
We do have to annually do them.
Okay, I thought.
If I expand on that question, because I had that played as well because it wasn't redlined. And so I was just curious as to if that was an update to the statute or are we just, are we modeling, are we just making the change based on how the statute is written?
We are, that is, the changes that you have here are the technicals to model after the statute.
So the way that we had it prior was over and above statute, and we are, okay, that makes sense.
And not locking us into a certain timeline.
I figured that, but being that it wasn't redlined, I thought maybe there was, so that makes sense. Thank you.
Any other questions? Already clear on what is all, okay?
I had one comment, and this is just my pet peeve because I do write policy quite a bit. We, I noticed that a lot of the numbers of the statutes were embedded now into the paragraphs, which is up to the discretion of administration, how they want to do it. But we had previously said to remove those and then only reference them in the legal statutes at the bottom so they'd be easier to maintain and change. So again, just a comment, it's not a question or asked to change. I just thought it'd be easier to, the reason why it was put the other way was to be better maintainable and also have hyperlinks to, eventually, hyperlinks to the statutes when we go fully. when we go fully electronic, instead of manually having to go into each one when statutes that are constantly repeated, change a number, update a version, or something like that. Not substantive, just maintenance.
Oh, I was just looking, I pulled up MSBA model policy, and it does state the 2025 Minnesota Legislature repealed Minnesota Statute Section 123B.935 subdivision 2, which was the language that was deleted. So, just for your reference.
Any other comments, questions? Hearing none, we will start with Jess at the end again.
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
And Mary?
Aye.
Charles?
Aye.
And aye. That motion carries 6-0. Moving down to administrative reports. Any administrators have anything to report? During the summer, I would anticipate not. That's okay. Anything from the, from the board? No? Okay.
I had, I had a couple of things.
Okay.
I just, I, since we had a meeting, we met at the board retreat, and I just wanted to say I appreciated the positive collaboration and the vision, the vision we set as we welcomed the new senior leaders. Looking forward to upcoming, the upcoming setting of goals in tandem with Dr. Thomas's goals that align to our strategic plan. So I'm looking forward to that. I also wrote, this Thursday is the youth and art craft market at Tom's from 4 to 6. And last year was the first year that I attended it, and it was great. So that's all I got.
Take our money. It's so good. It's so good. Thank you for saying that.
My Christmas present.
All right, thank you, Amy. If that's it, we have just some future events that you can take note of. And if there's nothing else to come before the board, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So made.
By Lisa. Second?
Second.
By Amy. All in favor, we'll start at the end.
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
And Charles?
Aye.
And aye. That motion carries 6-0, and we are adjourned.